Has not arrived yet, and I was gonna give him just like thirty seconds or so, and then I'm gonna have to do the gavel. So...
That would... You're an angel.
I know he's going to be very sad that he was late again. So... I tell ya, if he comes in, we will stop and let him say a word to us. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and this is the April City Council meeting. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Buffett. Councilwoman Davis.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Councilwoman Curtis.
Here.
Councilwoman Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Liberty.
Here.
Councilwoman Conley.
Here.
Councilwoman France. Mayor Harden.
And I'm here.
Thank you.
Our invocation tonight, again, we may rearrange just a little bit. We were expecting Colonel David Bowles to come. He is the head chaplain at Fort Leonard Wood, and he seemed like last time he had trouble finding us. So if he comes, we will stop and let him say a word. But Mike, would you lead us in prayer? And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
If you would, join me in prayer. Lord God, we come to you. We thank you for this city. We thank you for those that volunteer to serve the city. We thank you for those that are... Their vocation is to serve the city. God, we ask blessings over them. We ask safety for our work crews. We ask safety for all those in our police department. And God, we thank you for their dedication to our city. God, we thank you for the diversity of this city. God, just be with us now. Make us stronger as a community, and let us find peace with one another. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. First thing on our agenda tonight, of course, is the consent agenda, and I entertain a motion for... Motion from Ed?
Second.
Second by Cecil down here, and all those in favor. That's unanimous. And we have special guests with us tonight. How honored are we as a city to have our second Mrs. Missouri USA? And I looked back in my records. I was elected in 2012, and I believe it was 2013. We were in the old City Hall, and an Army wife named Aquila Vang was chosen as Mrs. Missouri USA. She lived in Hunters Point, and of course claimed Waynesville as her home. Well, guys, we are honored tonight to have Chelsea Smith George with us tonight, and she also lives in Hunters Point. So, guys...
Highland Woods.
Oh, Highland Woods. I apologize. I had written down Hunters Point. Highland Woods, so you're... I am your mayor.
Yeah.
All right. I was gonna make a joke about it being in the water at Hunters Point. Get it? Okay. So I'm gonna come down, and I want to present a coin to Chelsea, and then I'm gonna let her say something about the program and about her platform. You'll come over here, Chelsea, and I'll stand with you a little bit so it won't be so awkward. But we have a C D coin, and I want to offer that to you and congratulate you. We're very, very proud of what you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very good. Very good.
Well, my husband's military, so finally I get my own coin. I'm gonna have to get a coin holder. It's not gonna look anything like his, but that's pretty impressive. So, thank you, Mayor Harden, for that great introduction. Like she said, I am a resident here in Waynesville. My husband is stationed up at Fort Leonard Wood, and we have two kiddos here in the Waynesville District as well. So we were stationed here back in 2013. It's great to be back in the area. I've seen some growth, which is awesome, but we still have that nice, small hometown feel, which I absolutely love. Since winning the title, everyone has just been so supportive and great, and I really appreciate it. It's truly a great place to live. And as the mayor mentioned, I do have a platform that I am pursuing throughout this year titled Protect the Skin You're In, and my mission is to educate people about the signs of skin cancer, as well as what preventative measures they can put into place to make sure that they're preventing themselves from ever being affected by that disease. I've seen firsthand the effect that skin cancer can have on lives, so I wanna do my small part to be able to help prevent this disease from affecting other families as well. So I'm excited to be involved throughout not only our state, but especially here in Waynesville over the next year, and I hope to see all of you around the city at several different events. If any of you ever have an event that you would like me to come to or you think helps support my mission, please feel free to reach out. I wanna be as active, especially here in our community.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Lawrence, you might give her information about the Kids Park to the... Kids to the Park Day.
Yes, I'm saying I'm doing that. I'm actually working with dermatologists right now to secure some sunscreen samples for the kids.
Very good.
And gather little bags.
Super.
Does Mrs. Wilson know that?
Super.
I... Tomorrow night, she told me about...
Very good.
I'm gonna go.
Okay, we'll see each more.
Thank you.
Very good. It's pretty exciting. And I apologize for saying Hunters Point. Highland Woods, which is in Waynesville.
Yeah, you were so excited.
I know. I was so excited. And look who's arrived. Our new councilman has made it. Did the son get honored? Did your son get honored?
Yeah, he honored him.
Very good. Very good.
Yeah, honored and honored.
Guys, we also have a Good Citizen Award this month, and as most of you have told you, as I leave office here, this is my last year, as I leave office, I'm gonna honor somebody each month who has helped me to be successful, obviously has helped our city. And so this month, I chose Suzanne Wilber. Suzanne is the executive director of Good Samaritan. She goes above and beyond her job. You know, some of the people that I will choose will be people for their jobs, but they are people that love their jobs and go above and beyond what they really have to do. And so I was honored to give that to her. I believe the day that I went down there, it was Do a Good Deed Day, and so it fit right into what they were doing. One of the things I like about Suzanne and her mission at Good Samaritan and Genesis is that they help citizens in our community, but they help them at their most needy point, when they're most vulnerable, and those are... That's when people really, really need help. So I thought she was a good choice. And she could not attend tonight, as she is like me, she's a grandmother, and she had to go take care of grandchildren. So I wanted to say a word about Suzanne. Are there any other citizens who would like to address the city council? Seeing none, we'll go right on. And I must stop. Mr. Wallace, I must stop and say thank you to the video crew. For some reason, your name got pushed over to the side. I always say thank you, guys, for everything that you do. And Mr. Wallace is smiling really proud up there because in the Skills USA competition recently, he had two of his state qualifiers be picked to go to national championship, and I believe he said audio and video production. And so congratulations to you guys. Tonight, we have from the Channel 12 TV crew, we have Savannah, Garrett, Isaiah, and Alex, and we appreciate you guys a lot. We appreciate what you do. And hello to Facebook. Right, guys? Are you streaming up there? Okay, Mr. Wallace, he's streaming. All right, so off we go, and we'll start with our board reports. And I believe, as usual, the park board is in attendance tonight, and Lawrence Beamer is our new chairman, and Lawrence is going to give his first report as chairman of the park board. Welcome, Lawrence.
Thank you. On April 11th, we had... On April 11th, we had our meeting, and roll call was brought up, and I'm very pleased to announce that we had 100% participation.
Super.
And the only problem with that is we have one empty chair, and we'd like to find somebody, and we've got a couple of people in mind, but we'd like to find somebody that lives within the Waynesville area that would like to join the park board, and we'll fill all our chairs. We had approval of the last month's meeting, and it was a motion to Amanda... Amanda... And then... I'm gonna be messing up. I apologize.
We're trying to give you a good way because it's your first time.
Oh, next month's all different then.
Next month's a different story, and that's the teacher telling you.
I need to practice, and I understand the teacher part. Yes, ma'am. But Amanda brought the motion, and Mr. Milletti seconded, and it was a majority vote. We had visitors and guests of Karen Beamer, Councilman Clarence, Liberty, and then who is in attendance tonight, Mrs. Olmstead, president of the Plasque County Master Gardeners, which we will be discussing right now. Master Gardeners report was given by Mrs. Katie Olmstead. She presented the proposed layout for the demonstration garden that the board has been discussing over the last few months. And the... She gave the three-year... Of which I have copies of, if anybody's interested, the three-year plan. And we had a vote on that, and we voted unanimously to accept it. I took the three-year plan to Mr. Brown and to Mr. Harrell, and we all discussed it. Everybody's on board for it, and so as far as we're concerned, this weekend, they can get started. And right after the park board... Right after she gave her report to the park board, there was... Karen Beamer presented a $500 check to Mrs. Olmstead and Mr. Liberty, Mr. Milletti...
Milletti.
Milletti. I'm sorry. I'm working on this. And myself, all belong to the VFW. We're all three life members and of the VFW 3168, and I believe our mayor actually is familiar with that. I found out. They present... Mr. Milletti. Sorry. I gave him a ride. If he wants a ride home, he'll let it go. Anyway, they gave a $1,500 donation to the Master Gardeners also.
Can I ask you, did the Beamers give this money personally?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the Beamers are to be congratulated.
Thank you.
As well as the Lakeway VFW. So thank you to both of them.
The boss that wrote the check is here.
And also, I've got the microphone, how proud we are to be working with Master Gardeners again. Please convey that to your group.
And that'd be fine. Also, Mrs. Olmstead did say that they will be giving us updates each month, whether it comes through us or she will report to us at the park board, whichever can be done. The sports program, it got off to a rough start because of the weather, of course, and three soccer games were canceled. And so hopefully, it's getting better now. I'm not sure exactly what's going on as far as the field conditions right now. As far as the money being brought in on the candy sales, 90 are still left. At the end of the meeting, one box was completely sold out at the end of our park board meeting. And total... Hold on. Total up-to-date is 2,036.34. No, that's the sponsorship. I'm sorry. I'm getting lost. This is not my kind of venue, believe me. I'm gonna have to do some work on that.
I think you're doing great, Lawrence. You keep on struggling with your money.
All right, I'll just struggle. You guys got the report anyway.
That's right.
And that's only because of Amanda. She put it together really well.
This is public information. People can come and read it.
That is...
If you want to, just hit the high volume.
That's what I'm trying to do, yeah. Between Amanda and Mr. Harrell and Mr. Brown, they got me through the first month, if it wasn't for those three and the park board themselves, believe me. But anyway, we're gonna go down to the park superintendent. We have a problem down there at the park, and I know you all have been saying this for the last year of the graffiti. They're spending so much time on the graffiti, they can't get their work done properly. And they got too many other things to do, including cutting grass, which they finally got a good cut in recently. The bathrooms, the zebras, and everything else. Sees anything, please report it, because that's something they don't need to be watching out for and taking care of. I have noticed since the police have been doing the parking deal downtown, they have been making more trips through the park, and I'm glad to see that because they can keep an eye on it. Anybody sees anything, they can stop one of our police officers. There are some repairs after the flood on the trails going up to the springs, and a trail of tears signs. Those are... Been fixed. Events-wise, the 4-H Clubs is gonna be meeting at the Farmer's Market Pavilion for the dog training sessions, which they did last year and was very successful, on April 13th. On to old business. I don't even have to look at my notes because that was something I was in the beginning of. I'm very proud to say the Summit Park Playground, we had a vote on our equipment we're going in there. Mr. Brown and myself met up there for an hour and a half, trying to figure out how we're gonna get swings and everything else in there. We cannot put swings in. So we have four swings on the one side. Two are gonna be toddlers, and two are gonna be what I call big boys. And so we've already got that in there. And then we're bringing in two other pieces of equipment. We're extending it 10 feet out. Already been through the whole thing with Mr. Harrell, and he is okayed everything, and he has all the information. It's already in works and being taken care of. Kids to Park Day. If anybody wants to be there, I invite any and everybody to be there. Tomorrow, 3 o'clock in front of the stage will be the final planning deal, and whatever information comes up, soon to be Councilman, as far as I'm concerned, Councilman Wilson will be able to report any and everything on the updates on that. Park updates, we've had no other problems. We've already discussed RV park and Summit. Make sure I ain't got nothing else here.
Just an interest in Tiger Park.
Say...
The interest in Tiger Park.
The interest in Tiger Park. Yeah, that's right. Interest in Tiger Park, we're gonna make that a project. Myself and Mr. Rick Vernon are going to canvass the whole area and get response from everybody in there. And we did have a... Already a response from, I believe her name is Rebecca, yes, and she has three young ones there. So we're gonna go in there and find out what equipment they need and work on that, and that's gonna be our next big project, is work on that park similar to what we did up to Summit. Our next meeting will be on the 9th of May. It will not be at Tiger Park. It will be at Pavilion 1 in the city park down at the Ruby Dew in Pavilion 1. Ask my report.
Can I ask you a bit?
I was gonna ask you, is there anything that can be done down on those graffiti areas that would minimize the cleaning time, like putting clear lacquer or some type of smooth lacquer over it or something like that?
I can have Randy research that and see if he can find something.
One of the things that I'm most proud of that we did was right after... Gosh, I went too long. After I became mayor, we had a terrible graffiti down on the spring wall, and Vista Kids, I think we painted it over, painted it over with gray paint, and then the Vista Kids came in and painted the wall gray. And that, to me, that has been one of the best things we've ever done because you don't... You can just paint over it. You don't have to hire somebody special to come in and sandblast it.
I know in schools these days, because kids, probably in marversity or whatever, they start putting like clear lacquer sheet over it. That way, it just...
I know they do that in bathrooms.
Watch right off.
So in other words, they clean it off. They clean it off instead of having to paint over it, which is...
Well, the problem with parks, though, is, and you guys know this, if we get graffiti on the spring wall, you gotta be careful because that stuff can't go in the water. And so I remember one time, I don't know how many years ago it was, but it cost us thousands of dollars to sandblast that wall because you have to cover the water up. I mean, I think we even talked to those kids. Seems like I remember thinking, those parents got a nice bill.
Research the lacquer and see if it works on concrete walls. It may work in other places, and we'll see.
Very good. And I'll say what you said. If we find you, we're gonna prosecute you.
You already said that months ago.
It just has to be painted properly.
Right.
But it's very expensive for us to do that, and it's very disrespectful, and so I hope that people take that to heart. And I also say, if you've got this in your calendars, that May 4th is the opening of Farmer's Market, and they're gonna have a ceremony at 10 o'clock. I would like to try and count the people down. 10 o'clock on May 4th, that's a Saturday, they are opening up their season. And an interesting thing this year is that Fort Leonard Wood, the SLP Group, has been working with the Farmer's Market and, you know, kind of doing a kind of a regional thing with it, and so hopefully, we're gonna expect even bigger, better things at the Farmer's Market. So everybody come down to that again. Lawrence, thank you. To get a good...
Can I make one more statement?
Okay.
I would like to thank now Councilman, as of tonight, later on, Wilson, for the work he did with the park board. Our loss is y'all's gain.
Very much so. Very much so. Thank you for that. I think I've already told on that, and we'll maybe a little bit later, so we can talk you through more on that. Let's see. Guys, we also next have the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, and Councilman Clark is gonna be giving his last P and Z report.
Can I get an amen?
Amen. Amen. I would like to say that I was not at that meeting because I was honored by the kids at the junior high and had to attend that, and so Alan's going to... To say maybe one word about the issue that we're dealing with here. And as a city, I want to remind the public that we are basically following state law and getting ready for state law. Last November, medical marijuana was approved in Missouri. 64% for it, and so it is going to become the law, and the state is busy trying to get ready for that. Well, I want you to know that the city of Waynesville, along with several other cities, I was talking to the mayor of Lebanon yesterday about this issue. I've been following the issue in Springfield. So as the city of Waynesville, we're going to be proactive and be ready for this. We're not gonna be reactive. And so that was the issue at Planning and Zoning, and Alan, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, with the passage of Amendment 2 last November by the voters of the state of Missouri, by passing the approval of medical marijuana facilities in the state of Missouri, not just Waynesville, but all municipalities in the state have now been mandated that they cannot prohibit those types of facilities locally. So the purpose of our Planning and Zoning meeting on April 9th was to review and comment on draft ordinance or amendments to our land use regulations presented by Mr. Harrell that night. In attendance was myself, Trudy Dills, Yvonne Reeves-Chong, Scott Burns, Chairwoman Janet Kreider, Doug Beard, Twyla Cordery, and Jim Ward. Of all nights, this report tonight would be quite lengthy in comparison to past years. The new business at hand was to review proposed ordinance regarding medical marijuana zoning regulations. Chairwoman Kreider stated that the purpose of this commission is not to discuss Amendment 2 or our personal feelings regarding medical marijuana, but how our city can protect the citizens with zoning laws. Mr. Harrell stated that the city has compiled a draft ordinance based on other cities in Missouri who have already adopted their own ordinances. Mr. Harrell stated that the state law will not allow us to ban or overly regulate medical marijuana facilities, but does give some guidance to what we can and cannot control. marijuana facilities, but does give some guidance to what we can and cannot control. According to the proposed ordinance, medical marijuana dispensaries can be located in a C1, MU2, and I2 zoning districts within the city. Mr. Harold stated that medical marijuana cultivation facilities can be located in an I1, MU2, and I2 zoning district within the city. Mr. Harold stated that the proposal includes a distance of 300 feet from schools, churches, and public parks, but that Amendment 2 does allow for up to 1,000 feet to be regulated. He stated that when looking at the 1,000-foot distance, it could be considered unduly burdensome due to the locations of the schools and churches in our city. He stated that alcohol facilities are currently set to be a distance of 300 feet away. Mr. Harold also stated that there have been three different medical marijuana companies who have approached the city looking to bring their facility to our area. Now, what's gonna follow is the discussion that was held between the commission members relative to this draft proposal. Doug Beard had a question about the term cultivation facility. He asked if a person who grows the legal amount of six plants in their home for medical purposes with a permit would be considered a cultivation facility. Mr. Harold stated that we will have to do some more research on the terminology, but the purpose of this commission is to discuss commercial cultivation facilities. He stated that those who legally grow their own marijuana may have other legal restrictions not related to zoning. I stated, we are not here to discuss the politics of the issue. That was taken care of in November vote with Amendment 2 was passed. But we are here to discuss the planning and zoning issues and he has, I had multiple comments and concerns. I asked if city officials have solicited the leaders on Fort Leonard Wood, local church leaders, or school officials about the proposed ordinance. Mr. Harold stated that we haven't spoken with them yet, but anyone would be able to voice their opinions and concerns at the public hearing. I had also asked if DOD contractors, army civilian workers, or active duty soldiers would be able to pay a prescription and legally use medical marijuana without retribution of their jobs. Trudy Dills stated that the drug-free workplace policy adopted by DOD has not been changed since 1985 when President Reagan put it into place. Chairwoman Janet Kreider stated she would like to remind the commission that this is not what we are here to discuss. Mr. Harold stated that he could not speak for those entities and that would be, that would not be a planning and zoning issue. I also asked if city facilities would be used for dispensary or cultivation of medical marijuana. Mr. Harold stated that there has been interest in the city's industrial park area. I also stated, I stated that I do not believe the city would be, should be involved in leasing the city's property to a business like this. And I asked what is included when the word paraphernalia is used. There was a description of drug paraphernalia in the draft ordinance which is gonna be looked at for clarification for the public hearing. Mr. Harold stated there would need to be more research, including what the state definition refers to, to find out what qualifies as drug paraphernalia. I stated that in Section 2 and 3 of the draft ordinance, it specifically lists the zoning districts these would be allowed in. I had asked the commission if they are familiar with the zoning district map and I urged them to review it before the public hearing. I stated that by allowing these facilities to be in our town under permitted use, they would be popping up all over town and the public wouldn't know about it until they opened. I stated I would like to see these changed to conditional use, conditional use, so that a public hearing would be held allowing the public to speak their opinion before a facility opened. Excuse me. Twyla Cordery asked if that would cause the city to become unduly burdensome in, to incoming businesses. Mr. Harold stated that zoning areas in the city that would qualify for a business like this are already going to be pretty limited. Nathan Carmen stated that any areas that are permitted use wouldn't require a public hearing, but they would still have to follow all the regulations in order to receive that permit. He stated that the conditional use would require a public hearing each time. I described all the cities, the location of all the city's commercial districts and their locations. I stated I would prefer not to see a dispensary in the downtown area. I also stated that I would like to, I would like these facilities to be limited to only industrial areas. I stated that the ordinance is missing any regulations on the hours of operation and I wouldn't want them operating 24/7, 365 days a year. I stated that the state law will allow us to regulate, would allow us to regulate this, basically, the hours of operation. I stated I would like to see the highest allowable distances of 1,000 feet. I also stated that there are no fees established for when they violate the zoning ordinance. Mr. Harold stated that the commission could make some zoning areas permitted use and other areas conditional use. He also stated we could do some research on how we could regulate the hours of operation. He stated he would look into adding civil penalties to the ordinance. Trudy Dills asked if people would be permitted to bring medical marijuana to emergency shelters in the event of a disaster. Mr. Harold stated that would not be a planning and zoning issue, but would be addressed when the city works on the medical marijuana use regulations. I had asked if the distance would be measured by property line to building or building to building. Janet Kreider, Janet Kreider referring to location restrictions, asked if any school would only include the school building or would it also include school property like playgrounds and ballfields. Mr. Harold stated that for a public park, it would definitely be for the property line. He also stated for schools, he could look at property line to include those areas. Twyla Cordery stated she's concerned about property line to property line because many schools have a lot, a lot of land and are set on one small piece of that property. She stated that could be overly burdensome. She stated she would prefer writing the ordinances as front door to front door and would be okay with anywhere from 300 feet to 500 feet. She stated that the Missouri liquor laws are 300 feet and they have done a lot of research over the years and she is happy with their rules. Yvonne Reeves-Chong asked if front door of facility to property line be feasible or would it be unduly burdensome? Mr. Harold stated that it would depend on whether the commission agreed to 300 feet or 1,000 feet. He stated the commission would need to come to a consensus. Twyla Cordery asked if we could have different distances depending on facilities. Mr. Harold stated that they could definitely do that. He stated that we will have this reviewed by Mr. Muxlow, but he believes we need to go from any entry exit door of the medical marijuana facility to the property line of the schools, childcare center, church, or public parks. Mr. Harold asked each commission member okay with defining the distance as from medical marijuana facility entrance, exit door to adjoining property line, childcare center, church, or public park. The consensus was in favor. Mr. Harold asked if 500 feet would be agreeable for all facilities. I stated, I wanted to see it at 1,000 feet across the board. Mr. Harold stated that a majority of these facilities will be indoors for security, climate control, and other reasons. He stated the city is assuming the cultivation facilities will be indoors, but we may have to revisit the outdoor terminology in the ordinance. Twyla Cordery stated that changes her opinion as she was making her suggestions based on the facility being outdoors. Mr. Harold stated we may have to ask Mr. Muxlow if we can include public park, but for the time being, we will leave it in. Mr. Harold asked each committee member if they were okay with 300 feet distance from both cultivation and dispensary facilities. Consensus was in favor. I stated that I wanted all the facilities to be a conditional use so that the public gets the opportunity to voice their opinions. Twyla Cordery stated she wants a black and white ordinance because sometimes personal opinions and personalities may prohibit a business from getting a use permit. Mr. Harold stated that a compromise would be, would be to make some zones conditional use and some zones permitted use. Twyla Cordery asked what happens when a person wants to open up a medical marijuana business and someone on the commission has a personal issue with you. She stated that when that person applies, they may try to stand in their way. She stated she wants to protect people from this type of restriction and not hinder future businesses. Bruce Harold stated he understands the concern and would like to make the regulations more definable to avoid that. Janet Kreider stated that the state of Missouri is limiting how many facilities can even be in each district. Yvonne Reeves-Chong stated she would be okay with permitted use in all zones except for C1. Janet Kreider regarding outdoor, regarding older nuisance, asked if this would be a requirement for new bill, for new bills to make sure the older is controlled. Mr. Harold stated, yes, they would have to make sure the older is controlled. Doug Beard stated that the state of Missouri has put out a lot of guidance to help us. He asked if we could get a map made prior to the public hearing that shows what areas would be affected. He asked that it was defined by the zones and that it could be sent out to the commissioners or interviewed prior to the meeting. Nathan Carmen said he would get a map put together. Doug Beard asked what types of schools are included when the ordinance states any school. Mr. Harold stated that we will need to do more research and that area may need to be more specific. I stated that if we were not specific, someone might claim that their homeschooling and children would say that. So the commission consensus summary, permitted use, operations of this type, recommended for permitted use for I1, I2, MU2, and C1. Basically, I was the only dissenting vote. That's the easiest way.
So MU for the public, that means mixed use. I as industrial and C as commercial.
Commercial. The distance definition from medical marijuana facility, entrance, entrance, exit door to adjoining property line of school, childcare center, school, childcare center, church, or public park. For a cultivation facility, they requested 300 feet for the dispensary. They just requested 300 feet as well. Mr. Harold recommended the public hearing be set for May 14th. Chairman Kreider asked the commission if they would like to meet again prior to the meeting. And Jim Ward said he would like to see a draft of the new ordinance prior to the meeting. So in a nutshell, folks, that was the extent of our meeting. And for all those folks out there in Waynesville and surrounding areas, if you have invested interest in this subject, we have a notice of a public hearing that's already been published to amend our land use regulations. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Waynesville Planning and Zoning Committee at the city council chambers in Waynesville City Hall, where we're at right now, at 100 Tremont Center, Waynesville, Missouri, on May 14th at 5:30 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to consider it an ordinance to amend our land use regulations regarding medical marijuana facilities within the city limits of the city of Waynesville. Any person interested in this matter may appear at the public hearing and present testimony or other evidence.
Very good. And I did hear that it was a very good meeting, a lot of give and take by everybody. And I would just remind the public that this is already law, so we're not here to discuss medical marijuana being legal. We're here to discuss Waynesville having the right to regulate it and how we're going to regulate it. Actually, we do have the right, but how we're going to regulate it. And that's what we're gonna be discussing. And so I hope that everybody, I'm like Alan, I want the public to come. If you're interested in having something to say, you come and say it. But I want to remind you again that we have issues we're dealing with. It's not just that whether or not you hate medical marijuana or you hate marijuana. That's not our issue. So the meeting on the 14th is regulations, planning and zoning regulations. And again, I just wanna say that I'm proud as a city that we are being proactive with this, that we're not sitting around and waiting for somebody to tell us what to do, that we're being proactive instead of reactive. And so that's kinda how I look at it and we're gonna obey the law. Period. Okay? Any questions for Alan? Alan, can I say I appreciate everything you've done with planning and zoning over the years. You've been a great stalwart supporter of planning and zoning and we're gonna miss you. Okay? Standing committee reports. Councilman Liberty is gonna talk for Councilman Clark because I think he missed that meeting. Rogan Grant.
Meeting was called to order at 4:30. Sidewalk projects were discussed. Mr. Harold gave committee an update on the approved sidewalk project. We also discussed enforcing parking around the square. Mr. Harold stated the police department began enforcing parking regulations around the square. He stated that warnings will be issued for duration in this month and tickets will be issued about May 4th. Recreational Trail grant, the archaeological bids. Amber Fox stated due to grant restrictions, they have not received the minimum number of bids required to utilize federal funds. She researched that and found out if they cannot come up with that, the right amount, BNR said that they'd allow the city to document it and go on with it. Street department update. Mick McDonald stated that the street department has cleaned the ditches, worked on Superior Road, completed Lynn Street sidewalk, filled multiple potholes, and prepared for spring paving project. Road paving project. Mr. Harold provided the committee with quotes from Weller Asphalt. The roads tentatively scheduled for this year are GW Lane Expansion, Aportionous Reebok Road, Hawthorne Road, Deborah Court, Wildwood Lane, and Collier Street. Mr. Harold also stated that the industrial park was slated to be done this year. Mr. Harold stated that Bryan Adams had requested $10,000 to $12,000 for use for cracked ceiling of multiple roads to help increase the lifespan. And that was, motion was made, it was seconded, a vote was taken, and it passed the committee. We then entered into closed session at 4:44, back in open session at 4:46. Proposed ordinance approving rental agreement for 201 North Street. Our next, the meeting was adjourned at 4:47 PM. Next meeting's schedule will be held May 2nd at 4:30 PM.
Very good. Just so excited to see our road projects going. You know, in a small town, that's a big deal, getting road paved and getting roads repaired. And I think Bruce has this in his report, but I'm gonna jump ahead and say something that I want to remind the public that we promised you we were gonna use this internet use tax, use tax for our roads. And I believe I said it on the radio last week, we were expecting like $40,000 a year, that's what we put in the budget. In three months, we've got $54,000. So I want to say thank you to the citizens of Waynesville for being forward-looking people and, you know, voting to accept a tax that you were already paying and we're gonna use it and we're gonna fix your roads with it. And so be looking at midterm, we'll hopefully, Bruce, do two or three more roads. So very excited about that. And I was gonna break this up under police, but I'll go ahead and say just a word about parking around the square. As most of you probably saw us on KY3 this week, talking about the parking around the square, very positive report actually, and would tell you that I- square, very positive report actually, and would tell you that I believe our traffic officer said the same thing, that most of the comments that I've had from the public have been very, very positive. Amber, could you bring my phone? And I want to read something. Very positive response from the public. I believe the traffic officer chief said that he had probably given out three warnings is all. And so there has been, I think the public has responded to it, and the workers in the courthouse, the workers in the other businesses there have responded well to it. So I got this note today and I'm going to read it because it was on Facebook and I just screenshot it, but it was for the city council and the city staff. "I just wanted to say thanks again for jumping in on the parking situation. There has been a noticeable difference in available parking. I've had several customers comment on how nice it's been the last couple of weeks being able to find a place in front of my business. Thanks for all you do for this great city. I know it isn't easy. There are always critics out there, but you've got to do what you think is right." And that was from a business owner on the square. And so I wanted to share that with you and say that I think it's going to work. You know, if I'd known it'd been this easy, Bruce, we should have done this probably several months ago, but I'll remember, remind the public that we didn't have a traffic officer then. You know, we just recently hired a full-time traffic officer, and that's why we're able to do this. And so I hope again that it continues to be a very positive thing. Any questions again for Clarence, Rhodes and Grounds? We do have an ordinance tonight, and this, for the public, this is the old police station down by the park. That is a city property, and the extension office has moved it to Crocker, and we are going to rent this to, in fact, Shawn Wilson and his group. Shawn, of course, is a councilman, and he is going to rent this. And so I have an ordinance, councillor, this is 2359.
Down where it says pass by the city council, put the 18th day of April.
Say again, I couldn't hear you.
Put 18th day of April, not March.
Oh, April, okay. The date's wrong, right?
Date's wrong. An ordinance approving a lease agreement by and between the city of Waynesville, Missouri as landlord and Shawn A. Wilson as tenant, fixing and effective date. An ordinance approving a lease agreement by and between the city of Waynesville, Missouri as landlord and Shawn A. Wilson as tenant, fixing and effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion. Motion by Alan?
Second.
Second by Clarence, I heard first. And Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Thank you.
And very good. And Mr. Wilson, we believe you and your group are going to do great things there, and we appreciate your interest in our building. Moving along to utility and Councilman Francis is not here. Who was at that meeting? Mr. Harold, would you want to?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay.
Of course, our meeting was on April 2nd. The first thing we did, we showed the committee a copy of a Facebook comment from other local families showing appreciation for working on their sewer issue in their home quickly and professionally. So that's never a pleasant thing, but we're glad we're able to fix that and even get a Facebook comment the other way about it. So that usually doesn't happen very often. We also talked about the proposed ordinance regarding backflow prevention device, and that was passed by the committee, and you have an ordinance tonight for that. That's basically trying to prevent future damages in areas that are prone to flooding and other things. We don't want to, we want to prevent future damages in our city. We looked at a proposed agreement on locating our poles and pole inspections, and we had some money in our budget for, basically, for locating our poles. And we're, Daniel and I had talked to a company that would inspect our poles and locate them at the same time. We presented that idea to the committee and they approved it. So we're moving forward with that. We're also looking at researching electrical vehicle charging stations, and I got an update today that we're going to be, Waynesville is going to be looked at for one of the spots for a grant for electrical recharging stations. So we're still working that largely with the Missouri Public Utility Alliance. They're helping us out on that item. We talked about the pole changeouts that the electric department's been doing. I showed you some pictures in the city administrative report. Mr. Sheldon and I, Daniel and I went up to and testified on a House bill that related to tree trimming, and that bill passed the committee and I think went on, is working its way up the steps. We talked about the utility service partnership agreement. Those are some of the letters that go out to our citizens about the water and sewer insurance, that private insurance that they can get for their water and sewer lines. We discussed the preliminary engineering for the Northern Heights Plant. Mitch told about the gas department, they're out checking the lines and working on the cathodic protection. Mr. Sheldon kind of gave an update on the outages and the work they've been doing, as well as Jack updated us on the yearly tank and well inspections. So, Mayor, subject to your questions.
Why don't you move that microphone a little closer to you two?
Okay.
I am so thrilled about the electric vehicle thing. I knew that Amber and Sarah looked at some grant opportunities, so that's a, that's great. So I want to, before we vote on it, why don't you go ahead and talk a little bit to the public about backflow preventers? And guys, these are things that you can install in your house to stop a backup of the sewage. And so, you know, go ahead and talk a little bit. You know more than I do.
Okay. Of course, getting sewage in your house is not a pleasant experience.
No.
And a backflow preventer, we're basically asking for new construction to install a backflow preventer. And so if, in times that there's a clog or if we have a flood, it just prevents the sewage getting back into your house. Pretty simple device. It costs like $100, $200, easily to install when you're installing your sewer line. And in certain instances, we're asking people to, if they've had a major backup in their house, and whether it's commercial or their own house, we're asking them to put in a backflow preventer too. And I believe some of them have been very willing to do that.
In fact, the one last week.
Yes. In fact, I think one last week in a local church had that problem.
Right.
And they were very, you know, it's a no-brainer after you've had a problem that you can put in this and you can prevent, you can prevent a terrible incident for your house. So this ordinance also says in the case, in certain cases, we can do a cost share with the property owner, and we've done that before. And if the cost share goes over $1,000, I need to take that to the utility committee to get that approved. So we've got some measures to do some cost shares in certain circumstances. And, you know, if it goes over that amount, you know, the city staff can take it to the utility committee. So I believe this is common sense to help prevent damages in our city, and I recommend that you view this favorably.
And I would tell you, I just think, again, I'll give you guys kudos because I think it's just another example of us trying to help our people. You know, the family a couple of weeks ago that had the problem and wrote us a thank you. Because we, you know, obviously they had to repair what happened, but we helped them fix it so it doesn't happen again. And if you're in floodplain, if your house sits low, if it's an older house, you might need to think about that. Would you maybe talk to your plumber? Talk to a plumber about it or, you know, and get a suggestion. Maybe some people don't need to do it. I believe I don't because I sit up high, but kind of look at your own situation. If I was an older home and lived down in the flood area, floodplain area, you bet I would do that. Okay? So this is a good thing, I think, for our citizens, and I believe the council is very well versed on this. Councilman, it's ordinance 2360.
Thank you. An ordinance requiring installation of a sewer backflow prevention device for new construction and certain types of residential and commercial renovations, fixing and effective date. An ordinance requiring installation of a sewer backflow prevention device for new construction and certain types of residential and commercial renovations, fixing and effective date.
Very good. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike over here and second by Ed. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Very good. I keep getting in trouble because I, so many people want to do it. So Finance and Human Resources, Councilman Liberty.
Meeting was called to order at 5:00. Meeting members present, myself, Cecil Davis, and Mike Curtis. We reviewed the bills. Motion was made by Councilman Curtis. Approved the bills, signed by Councilman Davis. The vote was unanimous. Paid bills. Monthly budget review account status. Mr. Harold reported to the committee that as of date, had over $4.3 million in city bank accounts with $3.3 million in reserve and restricted account, over $500,000 and $12,681 in available money. We approved reappointment CoUSA board members in terms, which was Mr. Harold is director, Mike Francis is director, and Mitch McDonald is director. Councilman Davis made the motion to reappoint. Councilman Curtis seconded, and it was unanimous. Committee asked about the Volkswagen grant, which is a cost share 50/50. The city, it allowed the city to get a dump truck for half the cost, and reimbursement should be received the end of May or 1st of June. Review of House Bill 762. Mr. Harold explained the bill was to pass. It would be require the city to submit reports of payable vendor information in everyone to the state portal. It would also be an unfunded mandate. We should urge all legislative members to vote no. Personnel update. Mr. Harold stated Tyler Ross has been hired as utility public works employee. Donnie Beal has also been hired, water department. It was stated in need for closed session. Councilman Curtis moved to go into closed session, seconded by Council Davis. Vote was called unanimous. Committee went into closed session at 5:14. We returned to regular session at 5:27. We approved a letter of intent. Lease purchase of building in Waynesville Industrial Park with Missouri Essentials LLC for medical marijuana facility. And committee also approved lease of property at 201 North Street. And with no further business coming forward, the committee, we adjourned at 5:28 PM. Next meeting will be May 9th.
Very good. Questions or comments? Anybody? Okay, we have a resolution, and this is Resolution 2019002, and it is a resolution reappointing certain members to the Board of Directors of the Central Ozark Utility Service Alliance LLC, we know it as CoUSA, fixing and effective date. I only need to read that once, is that correct?
Correct.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Clarence, seconded by Cecil. And I think I could just do, all those in favor? That's unanimous. And I forgot to say, my vote called, I apologize. You didn't get on to me.
That's right.
Those ordinances passed.
Yes.
Okay, we have police committee, Councilman Conley.
The police committee met on April 4th. Councilman Liberty was asked to sit in. We're missing one member, Councilman. Meeting concluded at 3:30. We had no citizen comments. We spent some time talking about proposed ordinance on marijuana, on consumption and on open marijuana containment. We've done a lot of research. We have, Mr. Martin had set up ordinance to review for us, and it's completed, we'll go back around with it. And same thing on the open marijuana containment. We had some discussions regarding animal control and leash law ordinance. We spoke last month about wanting to have a leash requirement in the park, and the park board wanted to have some areas where the dogs can run through. And we discussed different options, and we're going to continue to research a dog park or confined designated area where the governors can allow their dogs to run without a leash. And Mr. Harold was going to involve the park board, what the committee would like to see, including our desire to require a leash in the entire park.
And I think I noticed in your minutes that you guys had talked about Benton Street, the athletic field there, being the area where they could throw a very decent animal.
Right now, we have a slight disagreement on the area.
Okay.
We will work it out.
Okay.
We also talked about limiting the number of animals per household. Currently, we have no limits on pets like cats or ferrets, and we do not have an ordinance on exotic or dangerous animals. And Mr. Harold reviewed some examples, some examples for this from the city, and asked for our comments. Councilman Francis, would you like to staff their research on service animals, see if they can be regulated in any way? And Mr. Harold said the staff would review the current ordinance to see if they're sufficient, bring findings back to our next meeting. We have a citizen who wants to raise bees. I guess you're calling raising. He wants to keep bees on the farm.
Keep bees, beekeeper.
He wants to be a beekeeper. He has, he actually has a very small hive, but it's not, it's not, like Mr. Frank, it's not a commercial operation, it would be a single hive. And we discussed the possibility of procedures for live bee, bee hives in certain areas. Councilman Brown doesn't want our meter readers to be stunned by that. I think the meter reader would probably agree with that.
Exactly.
We got an update on the animal shelter. In comparison to 2018, the shelter has increased in size and has been standing forth. They currently have four litters of puppies. And most of the animals they picked up have come from the Waynesville area. They do, they have a lot of volunteers, and they're very appreciative of all the help. We also discussed parking on the square. And as we know, the police are issuing warnings, and some people have complained about the warnings.
Well, obviously only three of them.
Well, yes.
Because they've only given three warnings.
I have a solution for that. If they're unhappy about being given a warning, we can send the chief and he can change it to a citation.
You can give them a real ticket.
I mean, that's.
Does that include the business office?
And we don't mean to be making light, but we're giving very few warnings.
And in the last few days, I've noticed that you can drive around the square and find places to park.
Yes.
And it was well publicized, it was made on KY3. The police department update, we had the Special Olympics on the George Ronald April the 15th. There were at least, there were 18 agencies participating. The chief wanted to recognize Scott Levin and Ron Timmons from the Ozark Technical Community College. They have been providing training for our officers, and they've offered to train all of the Waynesville police officers. This training is done free, in charge of the city, and on their own time. Training that will be covered, be ammunition firearm training, saving the city money and travel time. OTC is covering the cost.
Very good.
And with that, we're going to leave for closed session. We adjourned, and next meeting on May 2nd.
OTC has been.
We'll discuss animal leases and parking on the square, I'm sure.
Very good. And OTC has been a great partner.
They have. They've been a great partner.
Yes, a great partnership. We're so glad they're in our community, and of course, there's even talk about them expanding. And so it'll be interesting to see what happens with them. They've done a great job. I would like to say that we do know it's not liters of pups, it's litters, so maybe we'll correct that spelling there, so it won't be left that way. Any questions for Ed? Okay, Airport Board and Mr. Harold, I'll call on you.
Mayor, we didn't have a meeting, but we do have two ordinances, and if you'd like, I'd like to explain the ordinances.
Please.
The first one is basically a grant from the state of Missouri. It was originally about a $2 million grant. Of course, it's a lengthy process to get from the approval process from the governor, and Senator Brown was very active in us getting that. And Senator Brown was very active in us getting that $2 million grant from the state. And we've got the first, ready to spend the first $359,000 of it to construct, worked on the construction of the commercial terminal facility so we can handle the bigger passenger load at Contour Air.
Very good.
And recommend, of course, that you approve this. There is, we need to put today's date there on the bottom of the ordinance.
I think I suffered some technical difficulties.
Yes. February.
That's the first one. The second one is existing grant on the parallel taxiway. Of course, it took us a rather extensive time to get the approval process through the Ford and other entities. And we want to extend the, extend the project time period to January 31st, 2021. So we recommend approval of both those grants.
And of course, change the dates there to 2019.
Right.
These were simply the dates when we started working on these grants, probably?
Probably.
As most of us know, and you new people will know real quickly, we do a lot of paperwork on the airport. But it has definitely paid off, and I think since I've been mayor, there's been like $6 million spent out there. And all the improvements and things that have been done have been good for our region. So we have ordinance 2361. Counselor.
Thank you. And ordinance authorizing the mayor and our city administrator to execute on airport aid agreement between the city of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in order to fund a commercial terminal facility at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport, fixing and effective date. And ordinance authorizing the mayor and our city administrator to execute on airport aid agreement between the city of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in order to fund a commercial terminal facility at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport, fixing and effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cecil, seconded by Clarence. Any questions? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
And that ordinance passes. You know, I have kids ask me all the time, Ralph, why does the counselor read the thing twice?
Well, the ordinance says if the, if they're not posted before the meeting, then the ordinance has to be read in full. But if they're posted before the meeting, then you just have to read the title twice.
So I can make a joke and say, you read it twice in case somebody missed it the first time you read it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have ordinance 2362.
That's kind of the way legislation works, there's like a first reading and a second reading, or how many readings are authorized.
Okay, like at the legislature.
Yeah, it's like the legislature.
Okay, this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number four to ordinance number 2308 between the city of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in order to assist with the design of the parallel taxiway, wind cone and fuel access road at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport, fixing and effective date. That's the first reading. This will be the second reading. And ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number four to ordinance number 2308 between the city of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in order to assist with the design of the parallel taxiway, wind cone and fuel access road at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport, fixing and effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Alan.
Second.
Second by Jerry here, Jerry Brown. And any questions? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Clark.
Why, yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
And that ordinance passes, and I would tell you, as the mayor, it is exciting to see some of these projects actually get started. And it will be a good thing. We have economic development, and I believe Jerry is going to talk for that.
We had a meeting April the 2nd. We had two fill-ins for us. Councilman Conley, Councilman Liberty, Grace has sat in. We did discuss social media policy, and I think it's still under attorney of review, so that was brought to the council at that time. We do have a business spotlight program to kind of honor different businesses in town, and there is an ordinance on that, which I think we do make a little bit of a change on the policy.
I think weren't you concerned about the.
It's too complex.
The application.
The application.
And, you know, I think we'll go ahead with our ordinance because we can tweak that application, and we can make it workable. Sure.
And we didn't need for a closed session, which went in at 5:15, came out at 5:42, and then we discussed other business, rental agreement, which has already been approved, and a letter of intent for the industrial park, which has also been discussed already. And for the business, we adjourned at 5:45.
Very good. I would say that the social media policy, we've worked on that probably, what, two or three months now? It is taking shape, and we're trying to do the best that we can with it. And as everybody knows, social media is forever evolving, and we want to do this right. And so, I've actually read through what you guys have put together. It looks really, really good, and I believe we're kind of waiting on Ralph to make sure that we've covered everything.
Right.
Kind of a whole new law out there, isn't it, Ralph? When it comes to internet and social media.
As we found out earlier, there's been a lot of relegation of that around the country.
Right.
Some things you can do, and some things you can't do.
Right. And we want to be right. We want to do what's right.
Right.
Any questions for Dr. Brown? Okay, we do have an ordinance, and I'm honored that we're now going to spotlight our businesses. I'm sorry, a resolution. We're going to spotlight our businesses in Waynesville, and we're going to allow people to nominate, and we'll be getting that information out to you. It'll be out on the Facebook page, as well as the newsletter. So you can nominate some of the businesses in town, and we will spotlight them. And I believe that gets them like a proclamation, it gets them a month of advertising in our lobby, it gets a side panel on our Facebook page or on our website, and then weekly post on the city Facebook page. We have a very active Facebook page. We probably have 4,000 people on our Facebook page. Make that 6,000 people. And every time we put something up, there is a great response to it. And I think people have gotten used to, this is where you go for announcements. And so, I think I've noticed St. Robert is also becoming very active with theirs. I think people are just beginning to realize that's where people are going. And so, we've got to jump on the bandwagon and be part of that move. So this is going to be a great thing. So I have Resolution 2019-003, a resolution to establish a business spotlight program for the city of Waynesville, Missouri, commercial businesses. Fixing and effective date. I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Alan, and Madam Clark, call the roll.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. At this time, I believe, I don't see it on here, but I believe I'm supposed to do this. Right? I'm supposed to adjourn signed eye, which means I'm adjourning our current council, and shortly, I'm going to readjourn with a new council. And I don't know, Michelle, would you like to do the certification first? Just make a comment, or how do you want to do that?
We received certification results from, let me get down here, from Favors Office, from the Placenta County Court, certifying election of Bill Farnum for a Ward 1 seat, and Sean Wilson for the Ward 3 seat.
And then others, of course, were incumbent?
Mm-hmm.
And they had no opponents?
No.
We told you adjourn, you ought to have the council approve that certification.
Oh, very good. I apologize. Thank you for correcting me, counselor. That's why we had you here. I would entertain a motion to accept the certification of these election results.
Motion.
Motion by Alan, seconded by Jerry. His hand raised, all right?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
That's unanimous. And now, I adjourn, signed eye, and I would like, if you wouldn't mind, Alan, would you come down?
Yes, I wouldn't mind.
Apparently not.
Okay, Alan, for the first time, I'm going to say, you don't have a choice. You have to come down here.
Yes.
Don't call me mother, call me teacher.
Teach.
Teach. Well, this is really a kind of a bittersweet time for me and Alan, because we've been together for so long. Not that we're married or anything, nothing like that.
Half as long as I remember.
Half as long. But I would tell you that since I have been on city council, I have worked with Alan Clark. And we've done a lot of great things together.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm going to miss you.
I'm not going nowhere.
I know, but I'm going to miss you. I'm going to, don't you guys, I'm only going to miss his humor. He usually keeps us on, you know, on point and makes us laugh.
Remember you said that.
Yeah, I will.
Because I'm going to become a community activist, and I'm going to be.
Okay. You and I'll be buds.
I got to do something with my tongue.
Hey, I have a coin for Alan, and these are our new challenge coins that the city has just recently gotten, and you are the first councilman to get one.
Thank you.
And I have a letter for you, and you can take it home and read it. Look there and take a picture.
Amber, the cover's on. The cover's on.
Alan. And do you have anything to say before we?
Well, yeah, last time, I got a touchy roll, but that's neither here nor there.
I give you man.
Basically, I want to thank the staff. You guys are great, keep doing the good job you're doing, keep disseminating the information. So, well, these guys are always asleep half the time anyway. So if Mike over, they can make informed decisions. But, you know, city council's been great. And for the residents out there, I'll say it again, I've said it to the point of nauseam. Folks get involved. Come to the public meetings, come to the city council. Voice your concerns, voice the pleasure you have with the city and the staff. Because if you just let things roll by you without voicing your concerns to help these folks make educated decisions, you've got no room to complain.
Very good.
And please do that. That's part of government, getting your input. Whether you can make a meeting or not, send an email to Mr. Harold. So, other than that, I want to thank the residents of the city, and especially Ward 2. And I'm not going anywhere, I'll be popping up somewhere soon.
Look what I'm going to do.
You're not going to hit me with that.
No, I'm going to give you that.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Well, I do believe, Alan, that that's the first standing ovation I've ever seen one of our city council people get.
Well, yeah, first time nobody's done that.
Okay. So now, you are excused.
Thank you.
You are excused, and we have a new council that's going to come on board.
Thank you, Alan.
And you're welcome to stay, Alan, for the swearing in, if you'd like. But would you please report to the front? Councilman Bill Farnum. Councilman Clarence Liberty. Councilman Cecil Davis. Councilman Sean Wilson. And Councilman Mike France is not here tonight. He had grandparent duty, and he will be sworn in next month.
Okay, her done. Thanks, ma'am.
Read after me. I swear.
I see.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of councilman.
For the office of councilman.
Ward 2.
Ward 3.
And that I support the constitutions of the United States.
And that I support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all the laws of the state.
The provisions of all the laws of the state.
Affecting cities of the third class.
Affecting cities of the third class.
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville.
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the confidences.
And respect the confidences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. You come up and take your seat. She's getting your seat ready.
Yes.
Come loose. Get off the floor. Very good. And just a couple of words here before we finish up. And would like to say just a word about Cheryl Folkert. Cheryl was absent tonight, but I have enjoyed working with Cheryl also, and we do have some things that we will make sure and get to Cheryl. And not only has she been a great councilwoman, she's been a great friend. And as you can tell from the group now, it's going to be Luge and the boys.
Again.
Again, okay? So, but that's fine, that's fine, we get along well. Next thing on our list is to, oh, and by the way, I want to say one word about Bill Farnum. Yeah.
Just one?
Just one word. Bill Farnum and I also go way back. And in fact, we served on city council together as we worked on the downtown project. 2003, I was elected, Bill and I were on city council, we began working on the grant. And some of you are old enough that you remember those interesting times. And Bill and I were usually pretty good partners in what we were doing, and I always appreciated Bill. And so, I'm glad that Bill is back.
Thank you, mayor.
Very glad to have you.
Glad to be back.
Very good. The next thing on our agenda is the election of mayor pro tem, and I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We nominate Michael J. France.
I second.
Second. Are there any others? Okay, do we need a roll call? Your hand is. Okay, roll call.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yeah.
Councilman Conley.
And I would say, Mike is again off with his grandchildren, but Mike has been a great partner with me, and he, of course, the job he has allows him to do things and be free. And so, we have worked well together. So I appreciate that. I do have a list of the committee appointments, and I believe you should be happy with all of these. I think I tried to put everybody where they asked me to put you, and left you, you know, where you were happy. Some of you, certainly because of your jobs, you wanted to be certain places. And so, hopefully, this will work out. You will see the blanks there for the chairman, because obviously, those people are no longer on the council, and you will elect a new chairperson. Actually, in every committee, you will elect a new chairperson.
Well, mayor, I think we'd like a motion to approve those.
Very good. Could I have a motion to approve the committee appointments?
Second.
Motion by Clarence, seconded by Mike. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. That's unanimous. And Mr. Harold?
Mayor, first of all, I want to say thanks to Alan for his service. Thank you, Alan, and welcome to the new city council members. We appreciate it. And of course, I provided a written report. I just want to highlight a few things. I'm proud of some of the work the city workers have been doing lately. They did a great job putting in a new sidewalk on Main Street. I was pretty proud of our water department. They had a very challenging leak on Hospital Road, and they did a great job repairing that. The electric department's been very busy. They've done some live pole change outs, which is challenging, but it keeps our power going to our residents, and they keep upgrading our electric system. We've also been called to mutual aid to help St. James, a neighboring city, and our work there helped them restore their power hours and hours ahead of time for their residents, so that they did a great job there. We're finally starting to work on the parallel taxiway project, so that's moving forward. And I want to say, we got the rough draft, the report of the audit, and Stephanie Luther and I are working on the management discussion and now support it. We've actually completed that. The audit shows it was a good year for the city.
my best to, um, to serve the community in this capacity. Um, I would like to caveat off what, uh, Councilman Cecil said, and, and namely, for the ne- the neighborhood that I reside in, um, the kids are out, um, they don't have a sidewalk, they're, they're actually playing in the streets, so just, uh, during those hours of, uh, when the children are out of school, just be very careful, slow down, um, within your neighborhoods. And one other thing, um, it's very windy outside, um, and on trash day, for some reason, it just seems like, um, the wind is blowing everybody's trash down the street. I would just be mindful when you, when you do place your trash outside, make sure you got caps that, that lock down, and also, put them in bags, so we don't have trash flying through our neighborhoods, which will, in turn, cause other issues when it comes to drainage. Um, that's all I have.
Very good. Welcome, Sean. Bill?
Mayor, like I said, I'm glad to be back on the council, and I'm sorry, Mr. France isn't here tonight, but they always told me, if you miss a meeting, you'll get elected and put into something. And I got that tonight. Uh, I would also bring up the fact that school is about out, the kids are out, going to be out playing. A lot of people are consumed with their cell phones. And where I live, right down close to the park, I see numerous people texting as they're driving, and that's the most dangerous thing I can think of, not paying attention when they're behind the wheel, so.
That's right.
Very good. And of course, that's against the law in Waynesville.
Yes.
And, yes, go ahead, Mr.-
Can I go on an alibi?
Yes.
I, I did, uh, we've got some information for you. Basically, our new insurance company has highlighted Waynesville, so we want to let you know about that. We want, also wanted to let you know about the M M L Elected Officials Conference.
And this would be for new people as well as some of ours established. If you have not gotten to go, you may talk to Mr. Earl about that.
And there's, uh, there's basically a free city, uh, city officials training seminar that, uh, Merma will sponsor for us in Rolla on May tenth. So, uh, we also wanted to provide that information for you as well.
Maybe we would do that instead of pay all those hundreds of dollars to go to Jeff City.
And, uh, and also, our new insurance will cover half the registration cost for our members to go to elected officials conference.
Very good.
There's several options to get training there.
Very good. You guys look into that.
I just have one final question.
Okay.
Does this relieve me of my duties of monitoring Allen, so he doesn't say anything?
Yes, it does. You are now free from watching Allen Clark. And Allen left, darn it. I want to say two things, and I'll say them quickly. It's been a good meeting tonight, and I appreciate all you guys, um, and, and really, guys now, I can say guys instead of, you know. Uh, I wanted to say that I am dressed tonight in my blue and my gold, because I was at the change of command today for the chemical school. And we said goodbye to Brigadier General Andy Munera and his family, and welcomed Colonel Darrell Hood, who will now be the commander of the chemical seabird school. So, uh, I just wanted to say that, you know, one of the sad, one of the best things about being mayor of Waynesville is that we're next to Fort Larenwood. One of the saddest things about being mayor of Waynesville is that we're next to Fort Larenwood, because we have to say goodbye to all those people. And so, today was kind of sad, because I really thought the world of the Muneras. Uh, then also this week, uh, Mayor Smith and I, Mayor of Crocker, and I were invited to go to Richland, to the swearing in of the new mayor of Richland. And his name is Dana, Dana Tanner, and he's retired military man, and he, in fact, his wife was elected to the council, so they are both very much involved in, in Richland. And, uh, we went and attended his swearing in, and one of the things that we've talked about, along with Mayor Lauritsen in St. Robert, is putting together a dinner meeting between the five mayors of Plasque County. And we have a new mayor in Dixon, Alan Cool. Isn't that a great name for a mayor?
It is.
Mayor Cool. Uh, and Glenn Smith in Crocker, Dana Tanner in Richland, and of course, George and I. And so, I think that's a great idea. Uh, we did those some time ago, we used to, actually, it was a regional thing, the mayors[1551.12]